Check, one, two, test, test.
Good evening, welcome to the public hearing for the Township of Livingston Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today is Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. If you are an applicant for a D or a use variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exist and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the Township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require an affirmative vote of five members of the Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four members to grant that variance. As you'll see, we have five members present this evening. If you are an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of notice of decision and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance that has been granted, you too may appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of the notice of decision. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to the Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and the West Essex Tribune and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice of this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll.
Mr. Nardone?
Here.
Mr. Buktani?
Here.
Mr. Affronti?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Yeah.
Ms. Faas?
Here.
Members Resnick, Hochberg, and Khan are not present. Our board attorney, our board attorney is also present.
Thank you. I would like to start by calling, but to note for the record that Block 1704, Lot 10, 90 Sykes Avenue, application number 2023-35-V Bianca Sosa and Kevin Duffy. If you are here for that application, that application has been adjourned to November 28th, 2023. They will not need to update their public notice, but they will be re-noticing their neighbors. So again, if you're here for that application, that will be heard in this room on November 28th. Ms. Madre, will you please call the next application?
Block 4301, Lot 24, 68 Irving Avenue, application number 2023-19-V for Fabiano Di Olivera. Applicant seeks approval for a second floor and rear addition in violation of the following sections: 170-99C2, front yard setback; forty feet required; 26.42 feet proposed; 13.58 variance requested; 170-99C3, right side yard setback; ten foot required; 6.42 proposed; 3.58 variance requested; 170-99C3, left side yard setback; ten foot required; 6.01 foot proposed; 3.99 variance requested; 170-99C3, aggregate side yard; thirty percent required; 24.5 percent proposed; 5.5 percent variance requested; and 170-87CC4, habitable floor ratio; thirty percent allowed; 45.4 percent proposed; and 15.4 percent variance requested.
Mr. De Oliveria? No? Okay, we saw, I saw Mr. Dubanet here earlier. We'll postpone this and call this at the end of the meeting, see if, if he's around, if either one of them shows. Okay, let's call the next application, please, Ms. Madre.
This is for an extension, extension of resolution of approval for Block 1604, Lot 2, 6 Redwood Road, application number 2022-32-V for Dan Yuwen. Excuse me, applicant is seeking a one-year extension of the previously approved variance relief and resolution memorialized on September 29th, 2022.
Mr. Wen? Hi, please come to the front table. Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Check, check. Good evening, everyone. My name is Xiang Yuwen.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Wen, please tell us why you're here today.
My patient is trying to extend my existing resolution for another year so I can have more time to be ready for my construction.
And what is the reason you need the extension? Why you not started the project?
It was majorly because of the, the increasing on the cost of the labor and the material for, for the construction. So it's actually beyond my initial budget. So I was trying to, you know, trying to get more money to, to be ready for the, for the construction. That's why I need...
And do you anticipate being able to start in the near future?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
You're asking for a one-year extension, is that correct?
Yes.
That would run from the expiration of the prior resolution.
And so the resolution was memorialized September 29th, 2022. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to approve this request?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nardone.
I'll second.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Buktani?
Yes.
Mr. Affronti?
Yes.
Ms. Faas?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Your motion, your extension's granted. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Madre, please call the next application.
This is in continuation from July 11th, 2023 for a variance for Block 3901, Lot 106.15, 25 Marissa Court, application number 2023-10-V for David Willner. Oh, excuse me, applicant seeks approval, sorry. Applicant seeks approval for a pool in violation of the following sections: 170-96A8, rear yard area; ten percent required; eleven percent proposed; 1.4 percent variance requested; 170-96A8, rear yard setback; twenty feet required; ten feet proposed; ten feet variance requested; 170-96A8, left side yard setback; twenty feet required; eleven point nine proposed; eight point one foot variance requested; 170-87E1B, accessory structures; ten feet required; eight point five proposed; 1.5 variance requested.
Hi, Mr. Willner.
Were you previously sworn?
Uh, yes.
You're still on the road, can you understand?
Yes.
I also want to reiterate what you said earlier. Those were short-handed.
Sorry, thank you. You require four affirmative votes, so you need four out of five. If there were a full board of seven members, you would only require four out of the seven. So you have to decide, do you want to continue under these circumstances tonight?
Yes, we'll continue.
Okay.
Okay, so, please continue.
Uh, yeah, so in continuation from the previous meeting, I don't know if I'd need to go over what we've previously discussed or not, but we came back and, should I?
You can just talk about what you submitted and what you're proposing in terms of today.
More or less, the, the big difference in the plans was to move the rear yard setback. So the request was to make that ten feet, so we did make that ten feet. We're removing what is the fire pit on the plans, so that will also increase a year, the coverage for the rear yard. So we were able to meet what I think the board was looking for the last time. We redid the plans to make sure that we would satisfy any of those requests and...
We also moved the pool farther over.
One second, yeah.
I got some more to add.
Your name, sir?
Gabriel Ruchardi.
And you also testified the last hearing?
Yes, I was sworn in.
So you're still on the road, you understand that?
Yes. At the request of some members of the board, we moved the pool over. If you're looking in the back of the yard towards the house, we moved the pool over to the right as requested. We, as Mr. Willner mentioned, we moved the pool from the back lot setback farther in towards the house and we changed the, we're taking out the fire pit due to moving the pool.
Then the pictures we supplied were just to be able to see what some of the after product would look like and also just to give you a good idea of what the current yard looks like. And there was questions on the last meeting about the vegetation on the rear yard. And so that's where you see a lot of those trees. That seems to be going on for a long time to show that there's a lot of natural vegetation already in that rear yard.
Also, we included vegetation along the property line, which are on the plans along with the solid fence on one side to privacy and block the neighbors. So every, we tried to meet all the criteria that was asked last time.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any question for these witnesses?
I just have to ask, what are the photographs with the huge lake in the background?
With the... That's, that's, that's to show the after product, that the pool. Just trying to show what the pool will look like in, in the, in the act. That was the intention of that.
There, there was a pool, that similar pool going in that we built up at Sparta, actually had a five-foot entrance. And the spa would be inside the pool. Because one of the questions that came up last time is how high the spa was going to be compared to the pool. So this is where roughly it's going to be, it's going to be about eight or nine inches above the coping. So that gives you a reference to look at.
So you're just using that particular pool to demonstrate what yours will look like?
Correct.
It's not actually set on your property?
No.
Okay.
And the difference is the spa will be inside the interior. Actually, that one is still, it'll be, the spa will be inside the interior of the pool, not on the outside to meet the ten-foot setback for the coping and that would give the pool itself the water at eleven foot setback.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for these witnesses? Does anyone in the public have any questions for these witnesses? Anyone in the public have any statements they'd like to make about this application? Would anybody on the board like to make a statement? I appreciate both of you taking the time to apply what, what feedback the board gave at the meeting over the summer and adjusting your plans to fit better within our ordinances.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Beer.
You're welcome. After reviewing your, your plans, as Ms. Fa said, we appreciate everything you've done to move the pool in accordance with our wishes and I recommend that we approve this.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second. Okay.
Second by Mr. Buktani.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Buktani?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Affronti?
Yes.
Ms. Faas?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Ms. Madre, will you please call the next application?
Block 4700, Lot 36, Hazelwood Avenue, application number 2023-30-V for Abhishek Gangwal. Applicant seeks approval for a new attached garage, deck and right side and rear addition in violation of the following sections: 170-99C2, front yard setback; forty feet required; 26.1 proposed existing; 13.9 variance requested; 170-99C3, right side yard setback; ten feet required; 6.67 feet proposed; 3.33 feet variance requested; 170-99C3, left side yard setback; ten feet required; 5.75 proposed; 4.25 variance requested; 170-99C3, aggregate side yard; thirty percent required; 24.7 proposed; 5.3 percent variance requested; habitable floor ratio; thirty percent allowed; 39.94 percent proposed; 9.94 variance requested.
Mr. Gangwal?
Is he outside? He went to the wrong town. Is that his architect, maybe? Can you ask him if that's the ar, if it...
Oh, wait, oh, here he comes, I think that's him coming. That's him coming. I see, thank you. Mr. Gangwal? Would you, we just called your application, would you like to do this now or would you like to go to the end? Okay, so please take a seat. Yeah, you can walk through here. And just make sure you turn on the microphone in front when you speak.
Can I use the computer?
Who's this? The architect? Who's testifying?
Yes, I am architect, but I'm presenting Denon Group. I am associate architect working with Denon Group. So I'm not the architect on the record, but I, I am project manager designing this group.
He's presenting architect.
You're Mr. Gangwal, correct?
I'm...
All right, are you going to testify?
Yes.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you, put your hand down. Give us your full address, sir, for the record.
6 Hazelwood Avenue, Livingston.
Okay, is the microphone on, Catherine?
It should be good.
You have to raise it up a little bit so it's closer to your mouth.
It's good.
It's good. Anso, you would like to come here or you will speak from here? Sure. So based on our previous discussions, we have revised the plan. To keep it simple, I will go to the zoning table directly based on our previous discussions. So we have, we have revised our plans, keeping the design accordingly. And my situation is still same where I have, wherever I'm expanding, those are already existing variances, existing constructions there. And the lot is small and narrow, so we are requesting variance so that we can start. And along with that, one of the important thing is that my current land coverage is around fifty percent, which is getting reduced to thirty-two percent, right, Anso? The... Thirty-nine point nine-four is the lower area ratio and... So better utilization, better effective utilization planning is already considered. And we are increasing, expanding our house with the bare minimum requirement of my two kids and my parents will be staying with us because they are seventy-five year old now and my wife's parents are also seventy-five year old. So we, we have revised every possible scenario which we have proposed. Left side variance we needed because we are bringing the, the existing detached garage to the front and we are making it twelve feet wide, which is according to the code. So that's why we are, we are getting into that left side of the variance. Front side is already existing twenty-six, my already house is there. We are starting even behind the current start of the property, the, the existing building. So we are considering, we are giving ten feet there also where we are starting the wall of the, my garage. But existing house is having the twenty-six point one, the area ahead in front of my house as a front yard. So I'm not touching to that.
So to clarify, the, the front yard setback is pre-existing, non-conforming?
Yep.
And on, and on the left side, you're just, you're squaring off the back corner of the house, continuing the line and due to the shape of your lot,
Yes.
you're encroaching a little bit further into the setback, is that correct?
Uh, can you come again?
You're, you're currently, this left side yard setback is six point one eight feet and it's going to be five point seven five feet because of the placement, the current placement of your house and the current, and your property line?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So overall, in the whole design, we are just trying to extending the wall to make it, you know, box kind of structure. And, and one of the important aspect of the project is demolishing the existing garage which is detached and bringing it front so that our green area in the backyard will also increase because currently the design is not efficient. So my backyard is also very small, lot of concrete, lot of cement, structures are there. So we are demolishing it and bringing it to the front.
And on the right side, as you said, you're only building twelve feet to the wide because that's what's required by our ordinance for a garage?
Yes.
And so that's the minimum you can build on that side? And that's requiring you to encroach on the side, on the right side yard setback and that's how you're at the, you need the four point two five foot variance on the right side?
Yeah.
Okay.
So taking the feedback from last time, can you help us understand what are the changes, specific changes that were made in the plan from last time to this time?
About the HFR requirement?
Should I show the picture or...
Maybe quick, maybe will be good, just to know what, what changed.
So if you see here, I have detached garage, correct? And this is my current existing building. So I'm demolishing that detached garage and bringing it front and attaching from somewhere here, which is the ten feet behind the start of the current building. So that is one of the important thing that we are doing. And then we are, we are making a one room behind this garage and, and then two rooms upstairs.
Right, I think that was the plan last time, right?
That was the plan last time.
The difference between last time's presentation and this.
So last time, if you see, the room size was little longer, like twelve by seventeen if I remember correctly. And I was looking for a higher variance. And this time I have squeezed it based on the feedback and I have revised the, all the dimensions of every possible corner except the garage thing because that has to be twelve feet, so we have not reduced that. We are, we are keeping the broadness same based on the previous plan also, keeping the same. Garage has to be twelve, everything else has been reduced.
Mr. Gangwal, you, I believe last time you were seeking a fourteen or fifteen percent variance for habitable floor ratio. Today you're seeking nine point nine four percent.
Six to six point five percent efficiency, we have got it.
Right, and you weren't, you, I don't believe you were here when I spoke, when I gave my opening statement. For a habitable floor ratio variance, you need five affirmative votes. Tonight, we only have five members present. So you have the choice if you want to, and you can decide before we take a vote, if you want to take, have this heard tonight and have us make, take a vote tonight or if you would prefer potentially a later date when we may have more members present.
Hmm, I would prefer last time also you guys were flexible with me. If everyone is okay, no one is having objections, so without vote, if you approve, that's also good. Because last time also you gave these options, if you want to contest and would like to go for the vote?
Yes.
That's good. Any, any respected member seeing any issues, we tried everything. I'm ready to provide the information, but if anyone has any input, suggestion, feedback, that's why he is also here today. So we can share that what are the challenges, what are our thought process, what are the, you know, key, key benefits of this project? How the design is much more efficient and better compared to last time and wherever we have tried to excuse, squeeze.
Okay, thank you.
I, I even spoke with him if we can squeeze little more, but then, then again, the code, code and compliance comes, that room has, cannot be less than this. The window has to be this size, the door has to be this size. So all those important considerations we have taken into the discussions and design.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
All right, so my first question is when I look at the original zoning table that you had, I had to, you know, zoom it up, you remember that. You had for the habitable floor ratio, you had twenty-five percent as existing. Now, on this revised table, you have twenty-six percent and you're proposing thirty-nine point nine four. Uh, last time you're proposing forty-three, but you increased the existing, which makes it look like it's a smaller, a smaller number. I, I, I guess my question is, how did, how did we go from twenty-five to twenty-six percent existing?
Uh, you are talking about habitual floor ratios?
I'm talking about habitable floor ratio.
Existing is twenty-six percent.
Okay, now go to, now go to the zoning table from the last one. Last month it was twenty-five percent, so how did we gain a percent if it's existing?
Give me one second, I'm just seeing on my...
Take two seconds.
So compared to last, last plan, we are not increasing anything, right? Anso?
It's not the question. Yeah, you have to answer.
Yeah, no, I'm just consulting with you.
I know, we, we told you to bring, I asked you to bring an architect, right?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm asking. All right, so I'm asking, where did the extra percent come from, from the last meeting, if it's existing?
Is it possible that it was a mistake on the original plans?
Could be.
Or the original zoning table? Or is it possible that this is, or is it possible this is incorrect and it should be twenty-five?
Yeah, it's a typo, we can, we can correct it if, we can see whichever is that and we can submit the correct information if it is a typo, but...
You haven't done, you haven't done any additions to the house in between the two meetings?
Okay.
No, we have not done.
How, and I'm going to ask a question, how can I approve something if we don't know what we're approving? Because we don't have real numbers. You're asking me to approve something and you're saying, yeah, maybe a typo, but maybe it's not a typo. But you don't know the answer, but you want us to approve it. How do I approve something if I don't know what it is?
See, overall...
Take a minute, deep breath, I got it.
Let me see this thing so that you know. Catherine, Catherine.
Did the same architect prepare both plans?
Yes, he's here.
He's not the architect, you keep pointing him.
You need to put your microphone on and Mr. Flair, we need to swear your name.
Yes, I am.
We have to swear you in, raise your right hand. You swear the testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please give us your full name.
My full name is Mansur, M A N S O R, last name is Azizi, A Z I Z I.
I couldn't hear you because you're not speaking into the microphone. I didn't hear your last name.
My last name is Azizi, A Z I Z I.
Okay, and you're an architect?
I am associate architect. I have bachelor degree in industrial design and master degree in architecture from Boston University. And twenty years experience in US.
And your licenses are still, are current?
I am not licensed architect, working with Dun &amp; Group, I'm working for them, so...
Well, he can't testify as an expert, he can testify as a fact witness if he's reviewed the plans, what his understanding is, if he can explain it, answer the question.
Okay, and you've reviewed the plans?
Yes.
And can, and can explain them to, explain or answer our questions?
Yes, I can review, I can answer a question about that and about the number change also.
Okay, thanks.
So...
Does anyone on the board have any objections to accepting this witness as a fact witness? Okay, thank you, then you can proceed.
Okay, so, the calculation that we provided previously, we didn't calculate the AC unit coverage inside the calculation before. And we had the phone conversation with the zoning officer of the town. And we reviewed again the calculation and that's why we changed, we updated percentage. Two, twenty-six percent which is, because we were adding two pad of the AC unit and then some, you know, it was actually, it was existing AC unit, we didn't calculate that. And it was some concrete pad that we didn't calculate in the first original calculation. And after conversation with the zoning officer, we updated drawing based on their comments, basically.
You can see those, these are the AC unit that he is talking about.
So, I don't know the answer to this off the top of my head, does the AC pad count towards square footage?
Towards the ratio?
I'm sorry, I was looking something.
Does the, does the air conditioner pad count towards?
The ratio.
The ratio, thank you.
No, it's not, not in the closed structure.
Yeah.
It's the mechanical structure.
Any, any concrete pad or anything that covered the lot, consider as a coverage. So, we calculate all those area.
Yeah, our ordinance though is not a coverage requirement or calculation, it's a ratio based on the square footage calculation in accordance with our ordinance.
The underlying numbers are the same in both the first and the second application. The actual H F A R calculates to twenty-five point nine percent. I don't know if that caused the first dressment to drop to nine. But the underlying numbers are correct as far as the total floor area as well as the new addition with the proposed final addition.
Mr. Nardone, did you have other, you said your first question, do you have other questions?
Is it satisfactory?
Does anyone else on the board have any questions for this witness?
Yeah, I'm still just kind of confused as to what's changed. I don't have the prior plans in front of me. Not sure if you're able to pull up the last one and compare it to this one. I mean, I know you said the rooms are, I guess, a smaller size, but...
Yeah, so, yes, so we have squeezed the rooms and make it small. Overall, the plan is same, but room sizes and every dimension is reduced.
So, the new addition, it wouldn't go as far back into the backyard anymore?
Yes.
Okay.
So, previously, if I remember, we were having like twenty-two, twelve by seventeen room. Now, we have reduced to twelve by ten or twelve by eleven which we have given the dimensions.
Okay.
So, except the garage, we have reduced all the rooms, basically.
You're also not putting the deck in?
Deck, no, we have, deck is already there and we are not putting deck now. We have removed that also from the plan.
That's what we're trying, we're trying to get to, a list of things that you've changed.
Oh, sorry.
Besides, so that's really...
So, deck is also removed, yes, that is also...
That's what I say, right, you gave us a set of plans, we gave you comments, you've come back. It just, the thing is your list, which rooms, if you want to show us on your plans, if you want to bring it up, that might help my fellow board members to understand which rooms you've changed. You don't have to give to this exact inch, but give us an idea of which rooms changed and how it's smaller.
I have plans here in my email. So, this is, this is the old plan that we are having. Where we are still having the garage, we are doing the same. We are having one room behind the garage on the first floor, which we are keeping the same, reducing the size. We have removed the deck which we earlier proposed. And two rooms we are building on the second floor, which was proposed earlier also. But this time, size has been reduced. So, major changes is size reductions and deck removal, we already, we did it. And thank you for highlighting that, I was missing that important point.
Mansur, any, any...
Further questions from the board at this time?
Reducing size.
You're reducing the size of the proposed house to twenty-eight hundred and fifty-two square feet, is that correct? I can't read what the previous proposal was because my copy is not, not very, not very well. Can you tell us, what were you originally proposing for the total floor area?
So, original total floor area previously was...
Thirty-seventy-eight, three thousand seventy-eight.
You can read that, better copy than...
No, somebody wrote larger.
Three thousand and seventy-eight square feet was your first proposal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Original thinking was that we are still under the thirty-two twenty. So, based on all the discussion with the friends and family and the way things are going, we were thinking that it will get approved. But after discussing with you, I got a guidance and then we reduce from twenty, thirty-seventy-two, twenty-eight something, number that we have put it.
Does anyone in the public have any questions about this application? Does anyone, would anyone in the public like to make a statement about this application? Okay. Would anyone on the board like to make a statement or ask any additional questions?
I'm still in the air, I'm going to be honest with you.
Anyone on the board?
Are we hearing more testimony or?
You have additional testimony, I think.
From your other witness or?
If you accept, I can present the board and go over all the changes that we did in the drawing.
Sure, please, go ahead.
All right. So, the changes that we provided, in the back of the building, we pushed the building approximately about five feet back, which is this, this, this stairs here, we have a big longer backyard now. And then, on the second floor, with this dot line, dash line here and here is the second floor that we pushed it in. So, we're going to have a lower F A R ratio. In the previous one, we had, we were complying with, you know, thirty-two hundred twenty. But in the proposed plan, we came out down to twenty, I don't have the number in front of me, but twenty-eight hundred something. So, that was the changes and we removed the whole deck. We had here in the previous version, we had a large deck here that we removed that deck. That deck and basically, that's, that's all the changes that we did to reduce the F A R and lot coverage of the building. And by proposing this design, basically, we are reducing the lot coverage about fifteen percent of the existing condition. Because we are making driveway shorter and we removing the old garage and bring the garage to the front. So, the floor layout and plan in the site is going to be more efficient. And we are providing, we improving the site condition, basically.
So, you know, I think my issue is, it's, so it's an undersized lot significantly for this, for the zone, for the R four, right, R four zone. And the ratio you're requesting is a big ratio.
You understand that, yes.
It's a big ratio that you're requesting.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm hung up on.
That's the hardship that the homeowner have because it's a small lot and, you know, and if you look at, you know, most of the houses, they have about twenty-eight hundred, twenty-seven hundred of a square foot of living area. That's, that's the hardship that he has.
I mean, this board has been faced with other houses similar, a narrow, narrow lots not as deep, big ratios. But that's, that's the hurdle that I'm having a hard time getting over.
Yes, but anyway, this is, this is the fact of the site and the design is not, that's something that if we want to reduce the house lower than this, then basically, the homeowner doesn't get the program that he's looking like. And actually, I suggest him to sell this house and buy another house because that is going to save you, you know, more money than doing this. But he's, he'd like to...
I understand, but I can't look at that, that's not, that's not in my equation. In my equation, I'm looking at the size of the house, the square footage, the property that you have to build on. That's where I'm hung up on it, to be honest with you.
Yes.
And we've had, we've had these applications.
That's why we are requesting and we are trying to accommodate all the suggestions in the possible way. At least it should meet my minimum requirement, that's what we are trying to do. We have removed the deck, the room sizes that you suggested that you...
Would anyone else on the board like to make a statement at this time?
Yeah, I mean, oh, I'll go. It just doesn't seem like a lot has changed since the last time we heard this one. Still feels a little too dense. And, you know, I think one of the other things that came up last time was how this fits in with the neighborhood. You know, in my opinion, it really, it would be imposing on the neighboring property. You know, we haven't heard any expert testimony relevant to the statutory criteria of like how you would approve a variance. So, I'm having a lot of trouble, like, kind of leaning against this one.
I spoke with all of my neighbors, they are also okay. And that's why no one is here also raising the objection. As a part of the process, we share that, we discuss with them, both side of, and it's fitting into the scheme, not interfering any views, not creating any disturbance to them. So, it's fitting into the theme of the, the street, sorry. So, it's fitting into the theme of the street and no one is raising any objections, no one is here. They are all okay, so, they are okay because it is, it is already there, everything is already there except the floor ratio which...
Well, you're talking, you're talking about building onto the side and thereby further encroaching on the side. And you're right, there doesn't seem to be any objectors here, but we can't infer.
Yeah, it's not, it's not creating an inference to their view or creating any problem to them. I already spoke with them and they are all very happy with that. Only thing is that they are not here to support me.
Right.
And they are not here to oppose me also, right? So, it's equally same thing. That's why, as a resident, I would like to, yes, it is increasing more, but it is increasing due to the hardship. So, requesting approval so that I can happily live in the town. My kids are already in junior year, middle school. So, these are the precious years of my life which I want to live happily and my parents can come, they are already seventy-five year old.
So, you've heard from Mr. Nardone and Mr. Fronti expressing concerns about this application. You can hear from other members of the board and again, as I mentioned, you have to have five affirmative votes. So, would you like to hear from other members of the board? Would you like to...
I would like to see if you are not, like, he has a concern, I'm able to understand. He has a concern, I'm able to understand. And I don't want to go for voting again. But if required, then again, we will sit on the board, wide board will again squeeze it. But my design will be same, only thing that I will do will reduce the size up to the lowest possible area. And then, we'll leave whatever way we can leave with, you know, one of the compartment of the train, that's okay. What can I do if my lot is small?
All right, Mr. Gangwal, I think you can draw the conclusion that if you go to a vote at this point, your application is going to be denied because you're not going to have the five votes in your favor that you require. And if that happens, you cannot come back with a new application. And if that happens, you cannot come back with a new application unless it's substantially different. The board is, is indicating you don't really need to make substantial changes, but they can't proceed with the application as it currently stands. These are complicated matters and most people in your position come in here with either an attorney or their architect or both. You have neither. So you're at a disadvantage because you don't have the expertise to answer the board's questions. So I think you have two choices. You can ask the board to proceed to a vote, and I think you see how that will happen, or you can come back again with either your architect who prepared the plans and/or an attorney and see if you can get this resolved. So you have to decide now what you want to do.
And, and again, there were, it seems, the board has hung up on the habitable floor ratio issue and that, as Mr. Franti said, requires us to have a legal justification for that vote. And we need that justification from you and your team.
Legal justification? Option? No, what is legal justification? See, um, for architect, definitely he is part of the architect team, so he has all the information he can provide you. But sizes, definitely whether I am presenting, my legal advisor representing or my architect representing, my floor ratio will remain thirty-nine point some changes. And the house sizes is obviously my land, land size is not gonna change it. So legal way like to prove that, okay, this house has been approved, this case was approved and then my case also should be approved, yes, I don't have that kind of things. And I think if that is needed, we can, we don't want to go for the voting. We will revise it and come better prepared and we'll reduce the size again if, if that is the only case or, or we can see the legal counseling. But it's, it's honestly, it's unfortunate, the town is approving five-five-hundred apartment building, whole town is discussing for months and months and months, and here we are discussing about hundred feet. Honestly, I will reduce two-hundred feet, three-hundred feet something and come back with the same plan next month also.
You know, let, let me jump in here. I've been on this board for a number of years. We do everything we can to accommodate every single person that comes before us. We're all part of this town. We want every person to succeed a hundred percent with every dream you have. We are confined by the law and what you've been told last time and this time is that you need to have someone that can give us legal backing to approve things. You can't do that. I am sorry, I forget your name, sir. Unfortunately, he can only act as a fact witness, not as a legal witness by law. We're trying to work, we're not looking to mess you up or anything else. Everyone's aware of what's being built in town, that's a whole different story. We have rules and regulations we have to follow that we swore we would. And trying to balance it between our friends, our neighbors and the rules. And that's what we're trying to do. No one's trying to not make you happy. It's unfortunate, but that's why Mr. Nardone last, Nardone last time said to bring representation that can help you out.
No, we discussed with him also and that's why.
I, I got, I got it, he's trying, but he can only be a fact witness. It's not his fault. The architect didn't want to come, or you couldn't get him, or you didn't want to pay it, whatever it is, we can't, you can't give us the arguments that we need to say, okay, now we can turn the tables.
Okay, so let's, let's move this, let's move this forward. So, so Mr. Gangwell, the next, our November twenty-eighth agenda is, I believe is full and again, you'd have to make the changes so quickly and get them submitted to the zoning department and then to the board that you probably don't have time to do it in that timeframe. So our next meeting is December twelfth, it's very close. So we can adjourn this to December twelfth.
November, I, I'm ready to make the changes and submit it.
No, there's not, with, with the holiday, there's not enough time for you to make the changes and get them through the process. It has to go to the zoning officer and then to, and then, you know, for the denial letter and then back to us and everything.
Whatever you guys suggest, you as our boss, all I can say that. Very disheartening, five hundred units you can approve it in the town, maybe different.
Okay. So we can adjourn this to December twelfth if you would like, is that what you would like?
I don't have any other options.
Okay. Or we can, we can vote on the application.
No, I'm, I'm okay with, with, because that is the only thing.
Okay, again, we're, we're trying to, to work with you. So we will adjourn this to December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, no further notices will be required.
So what do I need to do for next meeting?
You need to submit your revised plans to, to Ms. Jackson, the zoning officer?
The, just the zoning off, zoning office.
To you or the?
No, zoning, you have to go back to zoning. They need ten days to review it, as you know, and we need this ten days prior to December twelfth for the board.
Okay.
Okay? So make sure the latest you have it is, I would say, the twenty-fourth? Well, well, we can discuss it if you have any questions.
I'm, I, I will be ready from our side.
Twenty-two weeks later.
Yeah.
This is the month that if you had to miss a meeting, this is it because it's only, the, the next meeting is only two weeks later because of the holidays in December. So you're only losing two weeks, you're not losing that much. Now, if it was December versus January, you got December tenth versus like January twenty-something.
Ten December is okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will see you December twelfth.
Third, thank you.
Yeah.
Block forty-three zero-two, lot.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess.
Twenty more seconds.
Okay, Ms. Madre, thank you.
Block forty-three oh-two, lot twenty, thirty-two Irving Avenue, application number twenty-twenty-three dash forty-one dash V, Danielle Voss. Applicant seeks approval for a second floor addition in violation of the following sections. One-seventy dash eighty-seven C C four, habitable floor ratio thirty percent allowed, forty-one point six-eight percent proposed, eleven point six-eight variance requested, one-seventy dash nine-nine C three aggregate, side yard thirty percent required, twenty-three percent proposed, seven percent variance requested.
Thank you. Ms. Voss? Okay, just be sure to turn on the microphone and speak into it when you talk. Thank you. Yes, please.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? You swear to testimony, you give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, please give us your full name and address.
My name is Danielle Degliamini, maiden name Voss, thirty-two Irving Avenue, Livingston, New Jersey.
Are you the only witness for tonight?
I am. I'm not, sorry, I do have my architect, Mark. I didn't, yes, sorry, yes.
My name's Mark Marceal, I'm the, a registered architect, I'm the architect on the project.
Mark, what was your last name?
Marceal, M A R, C as in cat, I L L E.
And can you give us your credentials?
Sure.
Raise your right hand? You swear to testimony, you give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you give us your credentials, please?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, I have a bachelor's of architecture from NJIT. I have my own practice in Matucha, New Jersey, I've been practicing since two thousand and seven. License is active and insurance is active and I've testified before numerous boards.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or, or objections to accepting this witness as an expert in the field of architecture? Thank you, we can accept you as an expert.
Thank you.
Okay, so please tell us why you're here.
I'm here to request, um, two variances regarding to our home expansion project for our home to add, wow, I'm really tongue-tied, guys, sorry, hold on one second. Not used to.
Don't be nervous.
Oh, yeah, easy, easy to say from down here. We are looking to expand our home, we've recently expanded our family, we have my husband's mother living with us and when we bought our house, it was perfect for us and two kids and now it's not perfect for us for two kids and a mother-in-law. So we are trying to add an extra suite over existing addition, which requires a variance to the habitable floor ratio and our side yard setback.
Aggregate.
Aggregate, aggregate side yard, sorry, couldn't see that out of the corner of my eye. So, yeah.
Okay, does, does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, Danielle mentioned the proposal is to add essentially a master bedroom suite over an existing rear family room. So on the rear right-hand side of the existing dwelling, there is a family room which has the existing side setback non-conformities. The existing house has three bedrooms on the second floor. Again, they are, you know, now a five-person family, so they'd like to add the fourth bedroom. Existing house is just under two thousand square feet, we're proposing to increase it to, to just around twenty-four hundred square feet. We do need a habitable floor area ratio variance. The requirement, as you know, is thirty percent of the lot area. Our existing lot is significantly undersized, it's five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three square feet, which would allow a seventeen hundred and thirty-five square foot house if conforming. If the lot were the required nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet, we could build up to a thirty-two hundred and twenty square foot house. We don't feel that proposing a twenty-four hundred square foot house is too large for the size of the property. Considering that the addition is located in the rear of the house, it, it will not be visible from the public right-of-way, the front of the house will essentially look the same as it does, assuming this addition is approved and constructed. So we feel that the visual impact on the neighborhood is effectively de minimis. And the existing side setback variance is already there. We're not proposing any additional impervious coverage. Essentially, we're taking the existing gable-shaped roof over the family room, we're gonna lift it up a story and then construct a bedroom underneath it. So the gutters will be in the same place, the runoff will go to the same, same place that it does now. There'll be no, again, impervious coverage increase. So we feel it's, it's a modest application. Really, our only other real option was to build over the garage, which, which is outside of the buildable envelope and we already have a small bedroom in that space. So it didn't seem practical to propose additional variances and not be able to gain, you know, an extra bedroom, even though that's a small space above the garage. So I think that pretty much sums it up. Appreciate it.
Does anyone have any questions for this witness?
Just so we're clear, the addition is going to be directly above the existing first floor, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions for this witness? Does anyone in the public have any questions for the, this witness? Do you have any additional witnesses or testimony?
No.
Would anybody in the public like to make a statement about this application? Would anyone on the board like to make a statement about this application?
A small clarifying question, maybe, are there any existing variances on the property that you know of?
The aggregate side yard setback, well, start, of course, starting with the lot, the lot is undersized, so that's an existing condition. The front yard is required to be forty feet, the existing front yard is twenty-five feet, that's an existing condition. The left side yard on the garage side of the house is, is point eight feet, that's an existing variance. As was mentioned, the aggregate side yard is an existing variance. And the existing house is non-conforming from the habitable floor area perspective, thirty percent required, the existing house is at thirty-four percent. And, and the building coverage ratio is also an existing variance, which we're not proposing to increase. An existing non-conformity.
And so I think what Mr. Bhutani is asking is the aggregate side yard variance is not, is pre-existing non-conforming, you're not exacerbating that condition at all. It's, as Mr. Nardone asked, you're just building straight up.
That's correct, and it's the existing house that creates that, you know, that existing condition. The addition itself is twelve point two-five feet from the right side and about nineteen feet from the left side. The addition itself conforms, the existing house does not.
And the, and for habitable floor ratio, again, as indicated by the zoning table, the house, the house currently is over the habitable floor ratio.
That's correct.
And the addition is exactly how many square feet?
The addition is four hundred and forty-one square feet. Which is the same size as the family room.
Right. Would anyone on the board like to make a statement about this application? To me, this is a very modest addition to the property and again, it seems thoughtfully done to build straight up, to not exacerbate any existing conditions except for the, the habitable floor ratio, which again, you're a severely undersized lot and are already over the habitable floor area. And as your architect testified, the addition is solely in the rear, will not be visible from the streetscape, so you will not see the habitable floor ratio variance is designed to prevent overmassing of houses and to make sure that they fit within the neighborhood and, and this addition does not exacerbate that concern at all, in my opinion.
I'll second that opinion.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I guess I'll make a motion. Based on the testimony heard, the addition is directly over the existing structure and is not exacerbating, exacerbating any of the variances except for the habitable floor area. But I don't see that as a detriment, so I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, second by Mr. Nardone.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Bhutani?
Yes.
Mr. Afrenti?
Yes.
Ms. Fass?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Block, block thirty-eight eleven, lot twelve, sixty-eight Amelia Avenue, application number twenty-twenty-three dash forty-three dash V, for Jeanne Hu. Applicant seeks approval for rear, left side and second floor addition and deck in violation of the following sections, one-seventy dash nine-nine C two, front yard setback, forty feet required, thirty-nine point three-three proposed, point six-seven feet variance requested. One-seventy dash eight-seven L one D, front side yard setback, thirty-five feet required, eighteen point four-one proposed, sixteen point five-nine variance requested.
Please come to the front.
Who is the applicant? Are you going to be sworn in and testify? And is anyone else going to testify?
I'm sorry, please put your microphone on when, and speak into it when you're talking.
Press the button.
Press the button so it goes green, there you go.
Hello, hello, yes.
Okay, let's start with you, you're Mr. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear to testimony, you give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Give us your full name and address, sir.
Chen Ho, sixty-eight Amelia Avenue, Livingston.
And?
And who else has a mind?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Qiu Wu, I'm the architect for this project.
And can you spell your name, please?
Sure, Q I O N G, first name, last name is W U Wu. Sure, Q-I-O-N-G, first name, last name is W-U-Wu.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. You swear to testimony, you give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. And I can give some education background credential. So I got my Bachelor's of Architecture from Iowa State University and Master's of Architecture on everybody's side from Columbia University. And I have been licensed in New Jersey since 2017. And I haven't testified in this township before, but I have done that in other township in New Jersey.
And your license is in good standing?
It's active, yeah, it's current.
Did you prepare the plans for this application?
Yes, I have them in the thumb drive.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about this witness? Then we can accept you as an expert, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Ho, do you want to start, or you want your architect to handle?
I have my architect.
Okay, thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. And I'm going to start with the presentation of the house at 68 Amelia Avenue. What you're looking at right now, let me just start with the site plan. enlarge this. So this is an existing single-family house locating the corner site of Virginia Avenue and Amelia Avenue. And it's in Zone 4R. This existing house is partially two-story with three bedrooms and a family room on the ground level. And it's a really small house compared to the lot size, which I will show you the zoning table. So the lot size is, current lot size is 11,998 square feet. And the existing habitable area is actually 1,618 square feet. So this house doesn't really have enough space to support the growing family of the applicant. And so we are trying to propose an addition to this house to make the three bedroom into six bedrooms and to reach a habitable area of 3,217 square feet, which is still under the maximum area of the zoning requirement of 3,220 square feet. So there are two variances we are trying to request today. One is the front, front yard setback, and the other one is front side yard setback. So both are actually relating to existing non-conforming conditions. So for the site plan, let me enlarge this. Okay. So the site plan, we don't have issue with the left side setback, which is within the zoning requirement. And we don't have issue from the rear setback. But the two setback we are trying to request, where is this? There are the setback along Virginia Avenue. We can see this gray number 20.3, that's the existing first-floor setback. And we still keep this foundation and this first-floor exterior walls. So this building setback still remain the same. And there's another number, 18 feet 5 inches, that's the deck setback. So that's a new addition of the deck, doesn't really belong to the building structure, not an exterior wall structure. So there's another one is the front setback along Amelia Avenue. The code requirement is 40 feet. And the existing house, the setback is 36.4 feet. And we are trying to propose 39 feet 4 inches, which is actually better than the existing condition. What we are trying to do is we are still trying to hold the existing wall corner. So that's, and actually push back everything like beyond this point. So like we are getting, if you see this front line, the setback line, actually more than half of the front facade meets the requirement. And just, the rest is just slightly over the 40 feet setback requirement. And then, let me see. Okay, so this is our site location, the corner site. And later on, I'm going to show you some exhibits of the surrounding house. One thing to mention is number 72, just next to ours, is a new construction. So the house actually looks like both area-wise and height-wise, is higher than, a lot higher than our house and a lot larger. So what we imagining is after our addition, maybe we are going to be comparable size. And we actually have a larger lot as well, which I will show you later. And then maybe started from the building plan, oh, sorry. Okay, so basement, so there's no existing basement for the house. And we are trying to create a partial basement with one bedroom and one recreational area. But just keep the existing crawl space on the right. Then, go to the next. So here you can see is the, on the left is the first-floor plans existing, which you can see, we try to keep existing foundation and exterior walls for the existing dining and family room area. So it's on the right portion. And then everything on the left will be demolished. And then for the new plan, you will see, we changed the dining area into a living room, which will be, fits the applicant's needs better. And we can also put the family room and dining kitchen space in the back, it's more private. And the back space here has a slightly higher ceiling plan, so we can have some better daylighting all the area. And we have a new deck added on the back that can be accessed from both family room and living room space. And on the right, you can see second-floor plans, both existing, going to be demolished entirely on the top, and a new addition on the bottom. So we are going to change the three, one master bedroom, two other bedrooms into one master bed and three other bedrooms on the second level. And you can see the family space, the roof on top of that for the new plan. So, next. Okay, so the elevation, so existing house, the height is around 28 feet. What we are proposing now is 34 foot 2 inches, still under the maximum zoning requirement of 35 feet. And so we have first floor, second floor, and then will be attic space that's not going to be used as the living space, will just be storage area. And then one garage is going to, one car garage changed to two car garages on the ground level. And in terms of material, we are going to have white hardwood plank siding, metal roof, and asphalt roof shingles. And we think this matches the neighborhood. Actually, would look really nice as a corner house. So on this page, you see existing house photograph and our proposed house, the new addition, from the same angle. So just slightly higher and more useful space. And one thing to, another thing to mention is the reason we added deck, but like actually added the living space on kind of the left-hand side, the left rear side of the house is we actually still respect the requirement of the front setback. So we tried not to intrude into that setback requirement. Another thing, exhibit I want to show, two things. One is the exhibit 8 is, so this is basement, but that shows the existing house foundation in red and to show how we keep the existing, partially existing foundation and exterior walls. And then we have another exhibit B. So, yeah, sorry, this may be loading. Okay, so this is actually more existing photos, but this is the new house in the new construction just next to ours. It's a bit hard to see since it's kind of covered by trees, but it's, we think it's probably close to 35 feet tall. So when we build our new addition, will be probably still maybe less than the height of the building on the left, or maybe the same, similar. And then the one on the right, this one, maybe.
That's in, we don't have that picture, correct?
Oh, you don't have this, I'm going to send you after the meeting.
Okay, so we need to mark that as A1, please.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, okay.
So that's A2, the previous page would be A1. Yeah, can you go back, that'll be A2, can you go back to the one right before?
Yeah, the other one will be A1. Right, this one will be A1.
Well, that one we have.
This is the plan, but I just added a boundary, so that's still an A thing.
Yeah, so that needs to be A1, if it's different than what's on file, that needs to be marked. So that'll be A1.
A1, the other one will be A2.
Correct.
What sheet is that?
This is, which sheet is that of yours?
This is actually, well, that's actually, the base plan is the basement. So like it's ZN-1 as the base basement plan, but I added a boundary of the existing foundation.
Okay, and then A2 will be the four pictures.
Right. Okay, so this is really hard to see, but I can point you to, basically, we superimposed our new building a little bit, so like that's just.
Do you mind zooming in a little bit, just to make it easier for everybody to see? Thank you. Thank you, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's just slightly bigger and higher.
Yeah.
And then another information I want to point out is related to setback. So the existing front side setback we have is 20.3 feet. And we actually did some research of the two houses behind us. So I think this is on Cedar Street, it's the one, let me enlarge. Okay. So the green one is 59 Cedar Street. And kind of the white one here. This one is 55 Cedar Street. And the setback, the current setback, we think it's 59 is about 17 feet setback, and 55 is about 12 feet setback. So they're both really close to Virginia Avenue, so closer than our building. So I think that's all we want to show today. And welcome any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a first question, the application is asking for a .67-foot front yard variance, but I think there seems to be a discrepancy on the zoning table and therefore on the denial letter. It says that the existing front yard setback is 36.4 feet and the proposed is 39 feet 4 inches, but I think those numbers are transposed or something. Yeah, if, on the survey, Mr. Nardone's correct. On the survey, on the existing survey, it looks like it's a very tiny encroachment into the front yard setback. But then if you look at the front, if you look at the proposed first-floor plan, it looks like the bay window in the bedroom is over the setback line, which might account for the three feet, not nine inches. There's something, there's something seems to be off. We want to make sure if we're giving you the variance, that we're giving you the correct variance.
Looks like you picked up three feet.
The ground level, sorry, like I'm trying to zone in. So there's a bay window, so like the bay window is actually above. So like if this is where you are.
Okay, no, but, but the, I guess the, so on your zoning table, it says that the existing front yard setback is 36.4 feet.
Correct.
Which matches the survey.
Which matches the survey, but your proposed front yard setback is 39 feet 4 inches.
Yeah. So what you can see is.
Are you taking down the house?
So that's the corner here, sorry, if this is not pointing like where I want. But that's a corner of the existing wall, but we are taking this wall down. And then here, the new, the new house, we actually pushed that in. If you can see, maybe I use my finger. So this, we actually pushed that in. So that's why we gained some room there and we can have further setback.
Let me, you're saying the front wall of the family room on the existing is now, you're cutting it straight across?
Yeah.
That's, okay, so.
Straight across and actually push that in further.
Everything else is being demolished?
Yes, everything on the left.
I don't think that was clear to myself and maybe one or two others.
So everything.
Okay, that cleared that one.
Okay, so that's that question. The, in the basement, bedroom five has the windows and it appears that there's a well.
Oh, yeah, that's the egoist well.
Right, but I don't see that reflect, that window, those windows reflected on the. Right, but I don't see that on, reflect that, that window, those windows reflected on the elevations or the, or the well.
That would have to be quoting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add that later, just clarify the drawing, yeah, we can add that.
And then do you have a topographical survey with you?
Topographical, we don't.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to, just to confirm the.
We don't have, but it's actually a pretty flat site, so there's no big topo difference.
Okay, and what are your, what are, or your, the applicant's intentions with the attic space?
Oh, the attic space is actually, let me go back to plan. So the ground level, the first floor is actually before, as you can see, there's only the family room in front and then dining. But the family room, which we think it can be in the back. And then, so basically we want to have a more like welcoming living room that can have, have outdoor access, but it doesn't have to go through dining area. So right now, like once you open the door, like family room is together with dining and then you can just see through everything, but.
You know, I was asking about the attic space.
Oh, the attic space.
The attic, yes.
The attic space is for storage only, just, it's not habitable. It's because the roof is actually slow and we are not intending to turn that into living space at all. We will have a put-down ledgers, which will be added to the joint, the permit joint later on, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very tall attic.
Yeah, it is relatively tall, but like one thing is we. Yeah, first of all, like all, all the roofs, they are like slope, so that space is actually not, it's tall. Like the highest part is, it may be tall, but like it doesn't, the space doesn't appear to be that tall in reality, since they're like. We only intending for storage.
I'm gonna jump in on, on this one. This is a corner house. So it gets, it's, it's kind of a little bit, if you want to say, in your face. We have this side yard setback on, was it Virginia, I think? And, you know, you're building over, which is good, that's great, and we're not taking that extra space. The deck does come a little bit further in, but then we have this very high building. As you, you're like, you're driving into a wall, is what I'm seeing. I, I know you're under the 34.2, but the massing comes across as. Yeah, yeah. It comes across as massive to me. And I'm seeing this massive eight windows on, I mean, you're saying you're not going to be using it, but I don't know if the next user is going to try to use this. It's just a huge area that's not livable apparently. And I'm just kind of wondering if there's anything we can do to tone it down, because it's just so big as you, you know, the house is kind of in the middle of the street, maybe you wouldn't see it as much. Set back further, but this is, this is right there at the corner. And, you know, drive around town, there are some houses that got a little too big on the corner. And it's pretty obvious that they're too big on the corner. So that's kind of my concern and my, getting my handle around this. I don't know if you have anything you want to respond to on that.
Well, one thing is our lot is quite large. I noticed by comparing with adjacent blocks. So, and the building, actually, the new construction next to us is, like, we were not exceeding, exceeding the height limit. And we are still trying to make everything like not going too high. And we actually intentionally, for the Virginia Avenue, trying to have a step for the plan. So like to actually try to break down the massing. So we are, we are trying like not to, to have long facade on both. So we still, we think Amelia Avenue is still the main address street. So we think that's where we can go a little bit wider. But meanwhile, in order not to make this too chunky in the corner, so we actually like push this wall back, so leave some deck space. So we are trying to accommodate the, the neighborhood and the corner space in a way.
I, I'm just seeing over a third of the house being roofed. It just seems a lot to me. I understand what you're saying, but I think it doesn't fit as well as other people might think.
Yeah, maybe we'll study to lower the attic.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with my fellow board member, Mr. Beer there. It's, so, and, and on top of the height there, the also, the lot is slightly elevated. I drove by, it is slightly elevated compared to like when you make a turn. Also being a corner lot, having this side yard setback, and that's another question I have is, there is a 20-foot, 20.3 front yard, we call it, because it's a corner lot on the Virginia Avenue side. And the proposed is also 20.3, so essentially it's the same structure you're, you're keeping the same wall there. But given that the, the lot is higher, the building goes that higher, it really becomes a massive structure. That's the concern, I concur with that.
Yeah, we can study to lower the attic ceiling height. We would study to lower the attic ceiling height, to lower the roof. Yeah.
They're going to be making changes to the application. I would like to give them any additional feedback at this time. Anyone on the board have any other comments or concerns about the plans as articulated?
Not for me, I think I'm okay with it, so.
That's really what I had, and I appreciate your feedback.
If you're going to redo the plans, you should have your architect add the height to the zoning table.
Yeah, we'll add that information to the zoning table, for sure.
It should be in the zoning table, not just on the plans.
Okay, so if you're going to be revising the roof line, then we would need, you'd need to resubmit the plans to the zoning department.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Does anybody in the audience, does, does anybody in the public have any questions for this application? Does anyone in the, does anyone in the public have any statements they'd like to make about this application? Okay. So as you heard earlier, the next meeting that you would be able to come back to would be December 12th.
Okay.
Okay, so we will adjourn this application to December 12th. No further notice will be required.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Madre, will you please recall 68 Irving Avenue?
Block 4301, Lot 24, 68 Irving Avenue. Application number 2023-19-V, Fabiano de Oliveira. The applicant seeks approval for a second floor and rear addition in violation of the following sections. 170-99C2, front yard setback, 40 feet required, 26.42 proposed, 13.58 variance requested. 170-99C3, right side yard setback, 10 feet required, 6.42 proposed, 3.58 variance requested. 170-99C3, left side yard setback, 10 foot required, 6.01 proposed, 3.99 variance requested. 170-99C3, aggregate side yard, 30% required, 24.5 proposed, 5.5% variance requested. 170-87CC4, habitable floor ratio, 30% allowed, 45.4 proposed, and 15.4% variance requested.
Thank you. Mr. Dale Oliveria? Okay. Given that Mr. Dale Oliveria has not come to this meeting, we will dismiss this application without prejudice. Ms. Madre, will you please notify the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.